Evening, I'd like to call to order the June 13th Board Meeting of Monroe Woodbury Central School District. Please stand and join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I try, it's too quiet.
You're doing well.
Thank you. Mr. Huberth regrets that he cannot be here. He apparently is taking an improv class to come up with better jokes at these meetings. Mission statement: We are committed to the academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and to prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Can I get a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Alright, motion passes. Do we have any questions and comments?
No, we do not.
No, we do not. Alright, motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. We're up to the MW Cares update with Mr. Cassidy and Ms. Talbert. Come on down.
Come on down.
Good evening, thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide an update on MW Cares. As you recall, we came to the board earlier this year to talk to you about this wonderful day that we were planning on October 26th for the high school. We were bringing in 106 speakers for that day, in which our students will have the opportunity to experience a wide variety of speakers that have overcome different challenges, to give them strategies in empowering themselves. We have been working very closely with many of our speakers to really formulate our day. Just to give you an outline of the day, we're still going to be running our nine-period day, but during that nine-period day, students will be in our keynote speaker for two periods, they'll be into an assembly speaker for another two periods. Four periods of the day, they will be able to choose what sessions they would like to go to, what resonates with them, what's going to make them get the most out of the day. And then each grade will eat together at lunch, which we haven't done before either. But we have developed with Mayor Grace Bouie from the MCC, we have been talking with pick-a-time who have reduced their rates drastically for us, so that we will be using the pick-a-time that the parents use for our parent-teacher conferences to help schedule that day. And it will be scheduled as if they were at a seminar or conference workshop where there will be 25, 27 seats for each session, and students will have to do it on a first-come, first-served to get into a session, and if they get close out, they're going to have to look into another session. We feel that each of the sessions will provide students a wide variety of opportunities, and something that is in that session will really resonate with them. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the 9th and 10th graders will be seeing Mark Moreau, who is a retired WWF and some other wrestling league that he was part of, who has overcome many challenges: depression, addiction, as well as other challenges in his life. Tara Connors, a former Miss USA, will be talking about self-image, a little bit about eating disorders, as well as overcoming various parts of her life. And then we have Kayla Mulady, who is a world champion beat boxer, who talks about how you can use words to empower yourself. We began this quest with looking for sponsorships from local and large organizations, and that didn't go as well as we had hoped. We were hoping to really get a lot of our financial stability from them. The district has given us a chunk of money, as you all know. We are now reaching out to our community in various ways to help really get them, one, part of the day, and, two, to help us prepare for the financial part of our day. Currently, we have a brick walkway fundraiser that is going on, and that has met with great success. We have sold, up to today, I would say, 80 bricks, which is a great achievement for only two weeks. We are currently also selling an opportunity for a $25 donation for people to be able to secure two of three sets, two seats of six seats, at the Hamilton performance on January 18th, which is the Friday of Martin Luther King Weekend, which we think is a great opportunity, you know, make a weekend out of it while you're down there. And we're going to be actually selling those tickets this Friday at our Pocket Book Bingo, which is happening at the First Presbyterian Church in Row in their back room. From 6:00 to 7:00, we will be selling Hamilton tickets, as well as offering opportunities for the Yankee tickets we have, which is August 12th against the Rangers, I believe, maybe. So these fundraising activities are really a great way for us to get the word out there more, to really help us start securing more finances, to really help us get through the day. And the day just really isn't, you know, just for financing the speakers. There's so much going on that day. Our goal is for every student to receive a T-shirt with our logo on it for the day, and have them wear it that day as well. And we are currently working on a Google form for all our students to give us their shirt sizes, so we can, you know, not treat it as if you go to a Met game and get a free T-shirt, everyone gets an adult extra-large. So we'd rather have our students have sizes that really fit them as well. Yeah, Dawn just wanted to talk, okay. We have all, recently, we've, back in January, we met with Mr. Dave Mistrata from the Woodbury Common about our day, and we had a really good conversation with him. And then during the winter times, you know, we didn't have as much connection, but recently we were invited to the tenants' meeting at the Woodbury Common, where we were able to meet with managers from all the stores to talk to them about our day as well, and we have gotten some nice feedback from them. We then ventured, like, three days later, we went to the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce. Mr. Mistrata was there again, it was like he was following us. And while there, presenting to the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce, who was also very open to what we were presenting, Mr. Mistrata took the opportunity to reach out to some other organizations he knew, he actually emailed them right there, and one was Yonkers Construction, who are doing the work over here that everybody's thrilled with. And they recently sent us a nice donation for the day as well. So we'd like to publicly thank Mr. Mistrata for facilitating a lot of things that are going on with us. We're going to their meeting again on the 19th to talk about some of the opportunities we have, and to meet with more of the owners as well. We've also recently attended the Rotary meeting as well, and they were very receptive to our day, so we appreciate their support that they are giving us. They have committed to purchasing a brick, they have let us know that. And this evening, after we're done with the board meeting, at 7 o'clock, we're heading to the Woodbury Community Association, who are having a dinner meeting tonight, where they are also recognizing the seniors who they provided scholarships to the other day, to also present our day to them, and hopefully they will also support what we're doing as well. Oh yeah, we have, I'm glad Dawn's here. We have a meeting with James Scoofus next week to discuss our day, and we've also, Michael Ammo responded, sent us an email today that he would be interested in being with us to discuss the day. And we have also reached out to many local and state politicians and dignitaries to talk to them about our day as well. The day is going to be an exceptional day. It's just, the impact that our students are going to have by hearing these stories and understanding, overcoming diversity, overcoming tragedy, overcoming, you know, self-inflicted type of things, it's going to be a really great day. We have several of our own alumni coming back to be speakers for us. We have Allison Murphy, who's a student, who graduated two years ago, to come and talk about what she went through as being a student of special needs. We have Julia Young, who back in 2009, you may recall, was out with a bunch of friends, and they had a bonfire going, and they poured some gasoline on it, and she was burned, I think, over 90 percent of her body. So she's coming back to talk about how she overcame that and decision-making. We have Chris Sharanka, who is also a student with special needs, who is now a lawyer and advocate. We have Mr. Barlow and Jillian Barlow, his son, coming to talk to us about transgender, and how there are perceptions out there, and what we need to understand about that and diversity. So we really feel that the community is rallying around us, and we very much appreciate all that everybody's giving us, the support, and we continue to really try to spread the word of the day. It seems until Mrs. Rodriguez sent out a letter from the two of us, I don't think everybody understood really the concept and the enormity of the day. And now that that information has gone out, and I thank Mrs. Rodriguez for doing that, everybody's getting a better understanding and really rallying around this day, and we truly appreciate the support, because what this, again, what this is going to do for our kids is truly amazing. And one of the questions we keep getting is this a one-and-done type thing? Two things with that. One, we do have another day planned for 2020, where we will be the kickoff for the county for Red Ribbon Week, but the second is, it can't be a one-and-done. This is really a springboard for what we need to continually do for our students and support them, and meets really a lot of what Mrs. Rodriguez is saying, is supporting students socially and emotionally, and how can we look at things differently. And it's been a big part of it, and I'm sorry if I'm stepping on any of your things, Mrs. Rodriguez, a big part of our strategic core committee that has been talking about, that how the importance and what the students have said to us, and through the surveys, and as members of the committee itself, there is a lot that students need and want, and I think this is going to be one of the first steps, to really help start meeting those concerns, those wants, those needs by our students. And we have to remember, we're not just here to lead our students academically, but we do have to prepare them to be the global citizens, and social and emotional health is a real part of that. And showing them how to overcome things, and how other people can show them and lead by example, is a great way for us to really start that. Did I miss anything?
Well said, Mr. Cassidy.
So we appreciate the time. Hopefully, everybody got one of these great pamphlets that Carol Spendly helped us develop. This is the information that we've been giving out to all the organizations that we've been meeting with, as well as sponsors. And we continue to really look forward to the day. Summer's coming, but it's not going to be a rest for us. We have a lot of things on our docket, and we will be actually incorporating the high school lead students to some of the things we're doing as part of their mandated 10 hours of community service that they agreed to when they signed up for the trip, so, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
So if I were just a community member, and I wanted to donate, how would I do that?
So that's a great, yes, that's a great question, thank you.
Thank you for saying that.
It's like a leading question, thank you. There are, on our website, on the high school webpage, there's an MW Cares link. Clicking on that really shows all our sponsorship opportunities. There are, we have the brick, as we have stated, and then the Mets, the Yankees, and the, I'm a Met fan, sorry, the Yankees-
Me too.
And the Hamilton tickets are on there.
That's true.
There's also different levels of sponsorship on a different link that anybody could look at as well. And then there is an icon for RevTrack, which is, if you donate, for anybody who just wants to just provide any sort of donation. So we have received, you know, donations through that venue, one of $25. I mean, any amount can go in there, and everything helps, but all the, all our sponsorship opportunities, all our ways for our community to really help support the day, are right off our webpage, high school webpage, MW's care links, and then sponsorship opportunities.
Program.
Everybody, thank you. Everybody that, you know, provides a donation, purchases a brick, will be recognized in our program as well, and every student will be getting one of those programs. And Conica has graciously taken on the printing for us, so that's another part of our budget that has gone away. Yep, food committee, right, that's what you're going to tell me? Yeah. We also have a food committee with the speakers that we have. We're holding a meet and greet with them Thursday night. We have 72 of our speakers staying at the Hampton Inn, so we have a meet and greet that Chili's will be sponsoring with a fajita bar for 250 people. Really not that many people are going to be there, so we'll have some for lunch the next day. Breakfast, Bagel Boys is helping us out the next day, and lunch is a combination of restaurants in our community that are donating single trays, double trays, and things like that. And we do have a separate committee of parents working on that for us, and they're doing a great job. They also have secured some sponsorships while doing that work for us, but that was also another financial impact that they were able to take away from our projected budget. Now I'm good? Maybe because we won't meet you guys again for a while, one last opportunity is, we are doing a silent online auction, end of August, early September, and currently we have had 10 sports memorabilia items donated to us, ranging from a signed Mickey Mantle picture to his seat cushion signed by a few popular giants. Many of the items are certified and come with a certificate, which is great. We also have had some donations of concert tickets for Ed Sheeran, six tickets for them in that concert in September, and that will be part of the online auction as well.
Any Met tickets?
No.
They're free.
Thank you, Mr. Salado.
Apolitical, no sides, no?
No sides.
But we continue to reach out-
I'm a diehard Met fan.
Yeah, me too, I know.
I know.
We continue to reach out to different organizations, and the water company that's donating 100 cases of water. Nestle is donating 100 cases of water to our cause, so there are a lot of organizations that are reaching out to us as they hear about the day. We've applied for several grants as well, so that could hopefully help us with the cost of the day as well, but it's-
But we still need, we still need people to donate, so if you're watching, they're watching.
Yes, anything helps.
Some people who don't sleep and have insomnia, they watch these. Oh, sorry. Do you have insomnia? You know, we need their support. This is very, very important for our school district, it's very important for our students, and it is the beginning of a year that we're going to be focused on the social-emotional, and not just our students, but our teachers as well, because we want the whole district to be in a much better place to support our kids. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I bought my brick.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alright, approval of textbooks, Mr. Monroe Woodbury, Dr. Eric Castle.
Guide?
Whoops, yeah, we'll do it the other way. Guidance report.
Part 100 of Commissioners Regulations requires school districts to have a comprehensive K-12 guidance plan. Also part of, part 100 is the annual requirement of Boards of Education to approve the guidance plan. We typically put the guidance plan for the following school year on the June Board Agenda, so we're asking Board approval for the 1819 guidance plan. There have been minor tweaks in this year's plan in comparison to this previous year's plan, including the addition of a district-wide behaviors that was approved in this year's budget. Continuing with Mr. Cassidy's comments about the emphasis on social-emotional wellness, one of the things that the district is going to be doing next year is a full review of the K-12 guidance plan and the manner in which we use our counseling staff to support our students, so there will be a full review of the guidance plan during the 1819 school year. So we're asking Board approval of the plan for next year.
Second.
Any questions?
Can you change mrs. to ms.?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Gladly.
I do that every time. Every time.
Every time. Thank you for the reminder.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Approval of textbooks.
And we're asking Board approval for the four textbooks listed. They are the Integrated Science textbook, the Social Studies World History textbook, the Imagine's Third Edition textbook, and the Precalculus textbook. Integrated Science is for middle school science, World History is for global studies in the high school, Precalculus is a required book by SUNY Orange for our Precalculus class to be offered for college credit, and the Imagine's book is for French IV and French V.
Do these come with the, like, online companion?
The Integrated Science comes with six years, Social Studies comes with six years online, and the French book includes a six-year online. The Precalculus book comes with an annual renewal of a one-year site license.
Algebra II. Is there going to be a textbook?
Is there, currently not right now.
No, there isn't.
No.
I know, I've been tutoring, it's very frustrating.
Yes.
Extremely frustrating, especially-
We're keeping tutors in business.
When Common Core has changed the notation, so that even a math teacher doesn't recognize the formula.
Well, we are, we are in the process of updating it to the next-gen standards and moving away from the Common Core standards, so perhaps if the State Education Department keeps the same set of standards for a prolonged period of time, we can lock in on a consistent textbook.
That would be nice. That would be very nice.
Alright, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Canvas of the vote and adoption of resolution declaring the results of the annual election held on May 15th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Aye.
Motion carries. First reading of the policy manual. Chris.
Most of these policies, for the most part, we're just renumbering. We went through a lot of them. Some have just reclassified it to, we categorized them a little differently, and the lawyers have gotten back to us and said, well, this should be with that, and so most of them aren't new. I'm just looking here quickly, just to make sure. Oh no, there's nothing here that's new. Anything, we just changed typos and whatnot, but for the most part, we just reclassified the numbers and made it easier. If you wanted to look for a policy, they're all under the same category now. The way it used to be, the book, you could have a Board of Annual Budget Vote and something to do with the membership could be $200, $200, $300, and then 700 numbers later, there's another one that corresponds with. So we're just kind of like fine-tuning it to make it easier to get around on the website, and the book will be much easier and clearer.
And if anyone has any questions about looking up a policy, they could still access it through Board Docs?
Yes, if you go to the Policies on Board Docs, you just hit the number or a keyword, you don't even have to know the exact policy you're looking for. If you just type in, you know, child abuse, you'll get every number and every policy that we have pertaining to child abuse, and then you can fine-tune it. So it's pretty easy, it's on the website, regular website, you just go on the Board of Education section. You don't have to actually go into Board Docs and log in, you can just kind of go in there and find it. So, that's the first reading, I don't know, somebody is-
Do you need a motion on the first one?
Yeah, I'm just looking to see.
So can I have a motion to approve policy 2200, 2300, 2350, 5659, 5660, 5681, 7530, and 7535?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Second reading of the policy manual, same policies?
Yeah, the same, we're just trying to get them implemented into the thing. If there's any questions or public problem, we can always adjust it later. They're really just moved around in size.
Alright, motion to approve the same policies as the first reading. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Reports by Board of Education committees, Chris, anything else to add?
Facilities, we have a meeting coming up in two weeks, I think, right after, is July 11th or something? I don't remember exactly.
You said facilities?
You said facilities, a policy.
I said Chris. You haven't.
So did I say facilities?
Yes, he said facilities.
Sorry, I'm on both these committees, that's why. Because I have nothing else. The policy, we're having, I think it's July 11th, we have another meeting, we sent a couple of policies back to the lawyers for a fine-tuning. Just, most of the stuff that we're doing now is just to keep up with today's times, the way the schools run, the way kids are acting, and, you know, just procedures in the state. State mandates a lot of things every year to change, and we want to make sure the policies are up, so we just have, I don't know what they are right now, there's three of them that we're, we sent back to them.
Yeah.
And your next meeting is?
I think it was July 11th.
I think it's July 11th.
I think it is July 11th.
If anyone in the public wants to join in?
Yes, it's riveting.
We post them.
Riveting, 9:00 AM, riveting.
It is riveting.
Riveting. Me and Lorraine are usually at each other's throats.
Dawn, do you have anything from Facilities?
We had a Facilities meeting, and I think we're very close to our next, to proposing a motion to the Board, a resolution. We're tentatively scheduled for Monday, I believe around 3:00, 3:30, for a follow-up meeting, and then we'll be able to have a resolution. We hope out of that meeting, which we voted on, I think, July?
July 5th?
3rd.
3rd, July 3rd.
Right, so, that's really, I don't know, Patrick, any other news?
No, I think you covered everything, right? We're talking about doing an expedited capital project that would primarily be at the high school.
Alright, and as soon as that meeting comes solid, will you post it to the website?
Yes.
Excellent. Alright, reports by student rep of the Board for today and today only. Sangina.
Okay, I just wanted to go through some final updates. I haven't given an report in about two months now, so just some final stuff that's been going on. Last month, we voted, we voted, new word, posted-
New word, we made it up.
It's alright.
Voter registration drive at the high school. This is coming from a lot of the sentiment that the seniors especially were discussing. So a thank you to Mr. Huberth, Mr. Cassidy, and Mr. Flanagan for helping us organize this. By the end of that week, we had over 250 seniors who had registered to vote, so that was very, very exciting. The week after that, we hosted a forum and a bunch of presentations, thank you for all of you who attended. And also a thank you to the custodial staff, the social studies department at the high school, the student council, for allowing it all to be organized. The students really, really did take something from it. It was really nice for all of them to have a direct connection to central administration, to the Board of Education, who was there to just talk about something that was important to them, and I hope that that's something that is carried, and you also were able to see the value in that relationship, for a student to raise their hand and say, Ms. Rodriguez, this is something that's really bothering me, and I want to feel comfortable talking to you about it, and they really did feel comfortable sitting in that room that day, so we really do appreciate that. I want to put out a congratulations to the Top 25, the Velodetorian, Sagittorian, students who balance advanced classes, varsity sports, organizations, clubs. They're going to be some of the best representatives in this, in the alumni community, especially moving forward. Congratulations to all of the varsity athletes, junior varsity athletes. That's something that I'm often made fun of, because I don't understand the nuances of all of these sports, but I understand community and I understand pride, and I think that these, that they, especially other students who are able to host that, so I would like to take a second to congratulate them from my seat up here. Congratulations to the science research students in the science research program, they hosted their symposium last month, and they are the students who are ready to build the connections, represent our community in the levels of academia, and they're going to be the ones who are discovering all the great things that are going to change our future, so I want to put a shout-out to them. The district art show happened, and all of the schools hosted their own art shows. Congratulations to them. You have heard me talk all the time about performing arts and arts in general, and this, they really did appreciate all your support. The auction did wonderful, all those students got scholarships, and they really appreciated that, so, thank you for that. I spent, the last thing I wanted to talk about, I spent some time visiting my friends, Smith, Crowe, Sapphire, High Tree, North May, and Central Valley, and across the board. They're very excited for summer, I can't tell you that that's not true, but they're also very excited to come back in the fall, which is, again, something that I was really happy to see. I can't wait to be a fifth grader, because I'm going to be auditioning for the musical. I can't wait to be in middle school, because now I can be on a sports team, and that's the kind of thing that they're really excited to be getting older and to be able to participate in more things. and to be able to participate in more things because they're getting more privileges now that they are older. So that's a pretty, really, that's a really exciting thing that I was happy to see. Just, again, a big issue, and I know, I say this all the time. Communication was a big thing that they were talking about. And in this situation specifically, I was talking to fifth graders, and I was talking to eighth graders, and I was talking to first graders. And you can guess, their biggest concern is just, I don't know where I'm going. I want to know about my building. I want to know about my new school. I want to know about, oh, am I going, do I get to carry a backpack? Do I get to do this? And this is a conversation that I specifically had with Mr. Coto. I don't know if he is here, but he was really, hey, Mr. Coto, what's up? But he and I had a really good conversation about it. And I think that especially for the students in North Main, they're, like, he is a good resource for them because he was in the middle school. And now that he is someone who can sit down with the fifth graders and say, "You guys, this is what the situation is going to be." And I think that, that's something, that kind of relationship where they have someone they can trust, who they know is experienced in the things that they're concerned about, is just something to look into for these students in the future. Because they just, I, I was sitting down with them, and we spent 20 minutes, like, can you explain to me the, how the building works? Where do I get, how do I get to my classes? Do I use a locker? And those are just pretty straightforward questions that I don't even think about anymore. But these, like, this is a big concern for them, the bell schedule and things like that. So that's just communicate. And encourage them to ask other students, encourage them to ask their teachers these kinds of questions, I think, is important. And, okay, I have one more thing to say. I just want to speak on behalf of all students when I say that we're incredibly grateful for everything that you do for us. We don't really understand it all the time, but we know that you always keep our safety in mind. And that is, on top of anything, incredibly important to us. Reflecting back, it's just, I have seen an intense value in cooperation and communication. Again, I say this all the time, and I know you already, you've heard me say it, but these students have so much love in them. And they just want to be recognized. They want to be accepted in this community. They want to be trained to be, you know, the next presidents, cancer researchers, pilots, lawyers, engineers, teachers. And they're so willing to make those connections happen, especially with all of you. They're so ready to make that connection. Again, I don't think I ever, I've ever said this enough. I am so grateful to be sitting at this table, even if it is for the last time. And you last, Mr. Rodriguez, my mom always teases me. Whenever I have a meeting here, or with central administration, or at a school, I always say I'm meeting with my friends. I never say I'm meeting with principal or students. I'm like, oh, I'm going to go see my friends today. I'll see you after 3:00. And I think that that's really able to reflect the reality of my experience. I really, really do understand community and family now that I've been able to work with all of you. And I truly, truly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being part of the team. You definitely were able to give us insights, sort of like a boots-on-the-ground approach from the student's perspective. And, you know, we need to know that. We need to know what they're thinking, how they're feeling, and, you know, to allow us to do our jobs better. So, you know, we wish you the best of luck next year, and come back and visit.
You can keep me away.
You're good.
All right. Personnel. Mr. Kravitz?
Thank you very much. We have a number of highlights in Personnel. It's a busy time of the year as we're all trying to fill positions that were left vacant by retirees, and we had a large number of those. Couple of highlights I just want to point out. Last week, we recognized those who received tenure. One gentleman was away at a very great conference upstate, the ASVOC conference. So he didn't get to get his, his due, and he wasn't called in front of everybody on the stage. So we did recognize Patrick last week, so we want to recognize you too. Good job.
Good job.
We kept for everybody else too, so. One of the, one of the, this is a bittersweet one. One of the names you'll see listed under resignations tonight that you're going to be quoting to approve is that of Elisa Soto, who's an assistant principal at the high school. Our loss is the gain of Beacon High School, where she's going to be the new building principal. So while it's, it's sad, and she's been here a lot of years, they couldn't have found anybody better. So congratulations and good luck. And like we do with most new hires, especially this time of the year, we have a number of new hires in the audience. So we're going to get a chance to give, we're going to give you a brief chance just to kind of stand up and let us know a little bit about you. So if you don't mind, if you're a brand-new hire to the district, if you could stand up, and we'll start with Sarah. So if you could just kind of let us know a little bit about you.
Excellent.
Hi, I'm Patrick. I teach physics at Honorしくe High School. This is my, I've been here for a whole full year now.
Hi, I'm Mr. Patrick Soto. I'm a senior elementary school.
I'm from Vanderwood. I'm a faculty teacher at Sapphire Elementary. I'm Allison.
Hi, I'm Kate Safrani. I'll be at High Tree as well as the high school. And I'm going to the ball, and I'm super excited.
I'm Todd. I'm teaching physical education at Central Valley Elementary School.
So thanks very much. Congratulations.
I have to say, I always love when physics teachers are forced to get dressed up.
It's, it's great.
99% of the time. That's it, yeah.
It is, it is.
Football jerseys and socks.
And I will say, they have, every time they've been in my, they've come to the HR office, they've been dressed like that through the interview process. We'll see what happens after.
A physics teacher in my building, middle winter shorts. Said, why? He's like, because I can.
Well, okay. We all make choices. So, and then we do have a number of retirees, and congratulations to them. So with that, I respectfully request approval for the items listed under Personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. And business financial. Patrick?
So I would respectfully ask for approval of the items under Business Financial section of the agenda, which include our standard monthly financial reports for April. We have one donation for $1,000 from the Special Olympics New York to support our unified sports program. There are four contracts, two of which are with Zytron Industries, which is our Medicaid processing agent, one of which is just a sort of a non-disclosure having to do with the sensitive information, personal health information and the like. And we have a contract, two contracts actually, with our STACK, which stands for System to Track and Account for Children. So that's the, the high-cost processing. So that he does all the processing for those claims. And then there's also a contract for a sort of a one-off task related to that. We have nine buses we're declaring obsolete. We have a number of bids, 17 bids. There are four no awards. And, you know, they're for various things, aggregate bid number, and then also unit price. So they can bid on different things. If you have questions about that, we can sort of take some of that offline and really look into that more, more deeply. We have two resolutions. One to establish a ceiling value for contribution to our tax surchargeary reserve for this year. That's the one reserve which you're supposed to contribute to before June 30th. And so that's a sort of a ceiling value. So if we have a surplus for the 17, 18-year, we could put up to $1 million, which is the ceiling value, into that reserve if we needed it. So that would more than cover whatever we may need for the current-year claims. And I believe that is everything bids, resolutions. Oh, I'm sorry. Not quite. There is a resolution for, again, has to do with bidding for energy. And we, we had a conversation about this in the past year, where there's, sometimes we have to react very quickly. We bid for natural gas and electricity, so they have to react very quickly. So the Board would be giving me the authority to enter it into agreement based on that, those ceiling values, not to exceed the values that are part of that resolution. That's it.
The obsolete buses, do they get auctioned off? Is there any value to them?
They do. We use an online site where we auction all our vehicles. And so we, there is some minimal value. A lot of times they're bought, and I understand, used in other countries, you know, and that sort of thing, or used by individuals for non, you know, student transportation purposes. So we do. We, with everything that we dispose of, if it has value, we try to get as much as we can for.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Establishment of Board of Education meetings for the coming school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Committees on special education, preschool, special education. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Reports by the Board and Central Office. Mr. Solato?
My last meeting is today, so I just wanted to thank everyone for all their hard work and dedication. It's been a pleasure over the last three years. I really appreciate everything. Wish you all continued success in what you're doing here. It was really an honor to serve my community with you all and work on this. It's very eye-opening, at the very least. So very much appreciated to be a part of that. Have a great summer and enjoy graduation.
I want to wish well to all the retirees, Mr. Soto, on your future endeavors. All the new hires, welcome. See you in September, I guess. I want to wish all the graduating class good luck in the future. I'm sure the administration, as I have a senior in my house, he's bothering me. I'm sure you're tired of all your seniors. Can't wait for graduation. I just want to wish everyone a happy summer.
Don?
Let's see. Elsie and I attended a meeting with the County Commissioner on Mental Health. And we had a very, a very, I guess, a good starting meeting with working with the hospital and working with county mental health about various programs that might be available to us. So I thought it was very productive, and it's pretty motivating to see what we might be able to do going forward. And that's.
I'd like to congratulate all the new retirees and the people who are retiring. Wish you all luck. It's, Mr. Soto, I want to wish you the best. I think Beacon High School is really blessed to have you. I'd also like to wish Mr. Solato good luck in whatever he does in the future. Thank you for serving with us. And say goodbye to Sanjana, because I can't say goodbye to Sanjana. This is going to be too hard. I'm really going to miss you. It's been a pleasure sitting next to you and getting to know you. And I'm really, really looking forward to graduation this year.
Roger?
I just want to put out a congratulation to all my friends, Class of 2018. We're just about there, so I just wanted to say that. And again, a thank you for everything that you've taught me and all the opportunities that you give me. I really, I will never be able to say thank you enough.
Leah?
I wish Michael and Sanjana all the best. It was great working with you. A pleasure. Have a great summer.
Ergoff?
Hey, Mr. Solato. It's been a pleasure working with you. Sanjana, it's, it's great. You grew up so much from post to the last meeting. So it's really amazing to see you out, and good luck for your next adventure.
Thank you.
Like this last year, we will be streaming our graduation online. So the more information to come on the website in next, by next week.
Thanks to the Board for approving the textbooks and for the guidance plan. Apologies to Ms. Carroll. I assure you that I will get your honorific correct on that document. The policy manual, that was the first, the policies that were the first reading this evening. Policy 2300 and 2350 relate to Board meetings and Board of Education membership. Usually at the June meeting, the Board approves the Board Manual, which was created last year. But the Board Manual relates directly to those policies. So as soon as those policies get finalized, we'll be able to update the Board Manual. That's the reason why the Board Manual wasn't on tonight's agenda. Congratulations to everybody who was recognized at last week's Board of Education meeting, as well as the many, many, many award ceremonies that go on this time of year, particularly Patrick. Congratulations. Congratulations to Elisa Soto, who I know, known for a very long time, long, long time. And I wish her the best of luck. Beacon is very fortunate to have you. Best of luck to Mr. Solato. It's been a pleasure working with you. Congratulations to our eighth graders who are moving up to the high school. And best of luck to all of our students graduating, particularly to Sanjana. I didn't have the privilege of knowing you before this year. However, what you bring to the table is what you've brought to the table this year. If that's any indication as to what's in store for you in the future. We are very fortunate to call you an MW, soon-to-be alum, because you're going to make the district very proud. So thank you very much. Best of luck.
Patrick?
Best of luck, Sanjana. You've been a great addition. I know everyone said it, but it's been really nice knowing you and getting to know you. And I hope to see you back in the future. Michael, thank you for being on the Board, your service to the Board. Thank you for being on the Audit Committee. You were a consummate professional, and I think you brought, you know, a lot to the Audit Committee. So good luck in the future. Thanks. That's it.
I'm just going to kind of echo what everybody said. You know, Michael, thank you very much for, you know, three years is a lot of years, and a lot of meetings and a lot of hours. So it sure goes fast, but, but thank you for all of that. And Sanjana, you know, just like everybody said, we're proud of you. And I'm sure you will continue to make all of us very proud of you. So, congrats.
Yeah, I'm wondering how many years, three years is on a board? Like, you know how dogs, it's seven years? 21. 21 years.
It ages you like six years. You age six years for every year.
You look great. You look great. I don't know where it's filmed at this.
The black hair.
21 years. I'm talking about all of us.
He's got a lot of years in him.
Thank you, Mike, for serving with us. Good luck. And enjoy being on the Audit Committee and having you as a co-Board member. Congratulations, everyone, as well. I echo the same. Let's see. Thanks to Mr. Cassie and Dawn Tapper for telling us about this day, because I'm really, really excited about this, that we have, have a day dedicated to the community and the students. I just, I am thrilled. I had my brick in the cart, and I never finished it. And so Mr. Cassie started talking. I was like, I better finish this now. I want to wish Sanjana, thank you so much. You are a breath of fresh air. And you did, you brought a lot to the table. And I know this was a difficult year, and you stood by the students, and you stood. That was it. You didn't move. And I appreciate that. I enjoy your compassionate empathy. I really do. And so good luck to you. I'd like to welcome Dawn as well. Look forward to working with you. I, I want to say, I went to the art show. I was one of the purchasers for the Board of Ed. And as soon as I walked in, I mean, there are such talented students in this district, whether it be athletes, artists, musicians, all across the board. And when I walked in, we were, I was supposed to pick out something from the Board, and I just was gravitated towards this one painting. And it was like a fight. I feel like I had a fight with Mr. Cassie without Mr. Cassie knowing about it. Because I was picking this for the Board, and he was picking it for the Pres-, for the principal's award, right? Principals?
Yes.
And I went back.
And he won. And you're the board member.
He won.
Just putting it out there.
But I want you to know that I was, I'm so taken back by the fact that this young lady, Eliana Araco, we had such a connection. It's a very deep, personal painting of hers.[1697.74] lady, Eliana Araco, we had such a connection, it's a very deep personal painting of hers. She actually made one for me and wrote a note. I'm not going to, you know, read the whole thing because it's personal and it's private and I'm going to keep that, but she does say that she really appreciates that we had a connection. And I have to say that when Elsie was giving it to me just now, we were just talking about, you never really know who has an impact on you or what somebody does to you or what you do to them, so, I'm really honored and I'm flattered that she actually took the time to think about me and take this picture and personalize it for me. So, I don't think that we're not going to see the last of her, I think she's going to be recognized in the future and if you get an opportunity to look at her work, it's lovely, so, have a wonderful summer and I'll see everyone at graduation.
Stacy.
I'd like to thank the presenters tonight and wish all of the departing Board members, Michael and Sanjana, it's been great working with you. I congratulate all of the new hires and welcome to the district. I wish Mrs. Soto all the best at Beacon and I hope everybody has a great summer and congratulations to all the graduates, eighth grade elementary, I have a, I have an elementary school graduate this year, an eighth-grade graduate, so, good luck to all of them.
Anthony.
Congratulations to all the retirees and to all the new hires and to the class of 2018. And Sanjana, Michael, we will miss you, Mrs. Soto, we will miss you, your contributions to this group and our district are immense and personally, it was really nice working with all of you and we're going to miss you. I did get to go to the high school award dinner to present the art show awards that we give as a Board and I too was just taken aback by some of the unbelievable talent we have in this district and our senior class and the community that comes together and offers so many awards to our, to our smart, bright young kids here, so, anyway, I wish everyone a happy summer and have a good evening.
Elsie.
Well, I wanted to read a plaque, Mr. Solato, that you did not hear us read, so I will read it, I can't do John's voice, so, I will read it in my own voice, and it reads, "In recognition and appreciation for your three years of service to children as a member of the Monroe Woodbury Board of Education," and I do want to thank you, so I'm going to give this to you.
Thank you.
And we should give him a round of applause. Our Board members work very hard, including our student rep. They work really, really hard and they don't get paid to do this work, and so, it's really, we are very grateful to ev- you don't get paid.
No.
No.
They're not getting paid.
Oh, did I tell you that? No. This is free, it's called volunteer, you don't get paid for this, guys.
Like the med.
You're getting nothing. Our thanks, so I do want to thank you.
You get reimbursed in karma.
You do, and love and care, yes. Sanjana, I have watched you grow from this young lady who came the first day last year, remember the summer and you were really nervous and you said to me, "I just want to make sure I do the right thing and say the right thing." You are perfect, you are an amazing, confident young woman and I'm so proud of you. I get a little emotional, so if you're a new teacher here, get used to it. To my new teachers, welcome, but here is what you need to remember, we here in this district, we serve our children. We make connections, we teach them, we care for them, that's the most important thing that I ask you to do, is care for these kids. And they come and some of them are, can be a little challenging and those are the ones that you have to really care for the most, and so, it's really important for you to know that. That is my vision for this district and that's what we do here, so I welcome you and you are in a great place, but don't forget that, that we're here to serve our children and to care for them, so, welcome. To Ms. Soto, I will miss you because you are an amazing lady. See, there I go again, get used to it. Good for Beacon, it is always a proud moment when we have an administrator leave us for bigger and better things. What? Are you guys talking on the side?
No, no.
And to our retirees, good for you. You, no, I mean, I mean it sincerely, I mean, this is great to be able to retire. I'm going to retire someday and I'm really excited about it. It is a new life, a new beginning, so, thank you for your service here in the district and I'm trying to think if I forgot anything, but I'm sure Eric said everything before I can think about it, and just a thank you, I look forward to graduation, it's an exciting time to see our students graduate, so I will see you all. And students who are still taking tests, you need to study, so if you're watching this, make sure that you're studying and getting ready for your exams because...
They're not watching this.
They might be having insomnia.
Definitely.
But in any case, thank you, thank you, thank you, and have a good summer.
I want to welcome the new staff. You guys don't know how lucky you are to be in Monroe Woodbury. This is a fantastic district, it's an outstanding group of people you're going to be working with and, you know, the beginning of a wonderful career, hopefully for all of you here at Monroe Woodbury. Ms. Soto, best of luck, you know, onto bigger and better. Mike, I can't believe three years is gone already, I want to thank you for, you know, coming to the Board and bringing the financial mind and looking at things in a, you know, perspective that sometimes I can't even grasp. Dawn, start brushing up on your accounting skills, you're going to need them. Graduation, we're doing the football field, right?
If it doesn't rain, yes.
And no rain.
I ordered no rain.
No rain, oh, good.
But I also ordered less snow days and that didn't work, so.
That's all.
So, they owe you, so you're owed. Yeah, not too much hot sun, yes, Lorraine, I'm going to order no rain.
Nice.
Beautiful day, like yesterday.
Yeah, that would be...
Yeah, we want a day like yesterday.
I want to wish everybody a happy summer. I know for most of the people in this room, you probably worked twice as hard over the summer than you do during the school year, because things are changing. Bargoff, I know, run like a lunatic, the teachers, I really get to enjoy it. Other than that, with a running time of 58 minutes, do I have a motion?
Oh, motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Send it to John.